I'd like to call the Property Subcommittee meeting to order, 601. We have two items on our agenda tonight. The first one I'd like to discuss, well, actually, first off, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The two items we have on our agenda tonight, one is the easements, the two easement agreements for Pleasant Street Mills Infrastructure Project. And, first off, I'm gonna ask if anybody has any questions regarding these easements. I'm not sure that we need to read the actual easements. They've been approved by City Council, or City Attorney. It's kinda funny to say. Council for the city, City Attorney.
We did get them last night.
Right.
I mean, I've got large-scale plans.
No, I just couldn't read them.
I don't have, I didn't, oh, I do have. Which ones do you wanna look at first? The Wamiko, 'cause there's two sets. There's the Wamiko set, and then there's the water line set.
Let's look at the water line set.
Oh, that sounds good.
This is the water line that's going to rubber thread?
This is the mechanic, on Mechanic Street, we've got a water line. The water line's being extended all the way down, the, parallel to the bike path, and well, its terminus is at Mechanic Street area.
I had to pull it up on Google Maps to figure it out myself. What's exactly?
Probably talking here about.
Um, hold on one second. Okay. So, there's an existing easement that's been in place, I believe it's 1968. Been there for a long time. It was put in place for sewer lines that went in in this area. On the plans that you were given, I highlighted the book and page references to each of these easements. There's two property owners. One is Charles Patterson. He's one of the property owners. The other one is National Non-Welvins. So, the easement area is this, basically, this dotted line here. It goes like this. Like that. It's highlighted in pink in the copies that you got. So, there's two property owners in here. This is gonna be the end of the water line. It's connecting here at the end of Mechanic Street. And so, we need, we're basically putting the water line next to the existing sewer, and it's within this easement that's been in place since the 60s. So, what I asked the city attorney to do was to draft new language that also included water as one of the utilities that can grant it as part of this easement. So, it's fairly simple. Both property owners have signed off on them. I believe you've got copies of those signatures.
Actually, I was gonna say, first off, we only, my copies weren't black and white. I didn't have anything that was highlighted.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, that's fine. Like I said, it took me a while looking at it to figure out where.
Barbara said she was gonna highlight.
Google Maps, but.
Oh, my highlights, I'm sorry.
Where's the bike, is this the bike?
Right up here. That's the bike path right up here. So, the bike path is, yep, comes right here.
So, it crosses just in one spot?
Yep, and you'll see that the water line essentially is gonna be running parallel.
Parallel to the bike path.
So, this is the connector, parallel, all the way down. Goes on for several pages.
Oh, wow.
And then it connects up here. This is East Works right here. Putnam Court is right here. So, it's gonna be running the full length, parallel to the bike path. Then, when we get to Putnam Court, we're crossing up, and then we're coming up here. And we're running in the bike path, because it's down here.
Right, right, right.
But, to connect to Mechanic Street, which is what Tom Newton and City Engineer have all outlined, that's the way that they want the system to be designed. We need, we're running it down to Mechanic Street and that hydrant down there.
Now, just a question. Is this right here, this part of, so, this is the bike path. Is this the section that's kind of like the back, and there's like a little entrance off the bike path that goes behind?
Yeah.
And so, it crosses there as well?
Um.
Cause I'm.
There may be, there's one right here, it looks like, possibly. I don't know where that informal one is over here. I'm not exactly sure.
Well, I know it goes over to this little street, but I think it might be over here.
Yeah. Well, this whole section, while the water line's being put in, this whole section is gonna happen.
It's gonna be closed.
How big is the line?
How big is the line?
Twelve-inch.
Twelve-inch?
PVC.
They have a device called a maul.
I'm sorry?
They have a device called a maul, which can actually draw line, maul.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, it's still, it's still a block data after, for early, but then they take a funnel of bike, they do sections at a time like that, though, cutting up the block. That's more expensive, because the device itself is really, most of the construction companies don't have, gas companies use it a lot.
Sure. Sure. This is, that's the, that's the one.
Now, my other thing, though, is, in the copies that we received, you had said that both, we had signatures for both, and I noticed that, I believe it was Charles Patterson, I saw his signature, but National Non-Welvins, Welvins, it looks like they were holding out for some.
They don't, they've signed it now.
They have some.
Yeah, but I provided Barbara a copy of that, so.
Okay, yeah, cause that was.
I apologize that I didn't get to you.
No, that was fine.
She does have a copy. So, yeah, you have, I have both original signatures.
Does the line go all the way to Ferris Street?
The line will not be going all the way to Ferris Street. It'll be going down to Three Kingdoms, which is right under Legion. It's the last mill on Pleasant Street Mills.
That's the last mill, okay.
There's six, there's six.
And then, does it loop back into the Pleasant Street side in any way, or?
Um.
Just curious.
What happens on that end?
The goal was defeated in two different directions, or how Welvins defeated in two different directions.
Two different directions. Um. So, this is Interland. It's ending here, and this has been reconfigured slightly with Tom Newton and Jim Gracia out in the field with our construction company this week. There's an SK drawing, which shows a little bit different of the configuration. The city, the Water Department is gonna be doing some trenching, and they've re devised the system, because there's some pipes here that need to get flushed out. There's gonna be chlorination going on in here, and they wanna be able to control that, so, I don't remember all of the gory details, but this section here is being reconfigured slightly, but this is the end. This is the terminus on the other end. So, this is the fire suppression line for the mills, and so, this will, you'll see that there's connections to each mill. Right now, there's only one connection in and one connection out for all six of the buildings. What this will allow the Water Department to do is to meter each of the buildings individually based on their usage, and so, that'll be a benefit. Also, if there's a fire in East Works and the pressure goes down, it's not gonna impact no one even. Right now, the whole system is connected, so if there's a drop in the flow, because their sprinklers are gone on, it impacts everybody in those, in the whole mills. So, what this do, what this is gonna do is allow individual secondaries to be going into each of the buildings, so we have greater control of the fire, of the fire water. Um, so, that's what that easement core is for the beginning part, is up here. So, that's the water easement. Okay?
Concerns or questions on the water easement? With Non-Welvins and Charles Patterson? Plus from Max Electric Lines?
Okay, we'll move on to that one. We have to look at some plans. Please hold. Thank you. This is flip whole set, so.
I think it's not highlighted.
Yeah, there, you can see maybe the hashes, that sort of thing.
I could, right, I mean.
So, these plans are not highlighted, but essentially, right now, there's, as you recall, maybe from previously, we have an easement agreement between the city and each of the mill owners. So, there's various lines going on here, just, you know, there's several easements throughout this project. But, there's basically the property line between the city and the mill owners runs about here. So, city property, let's see, Land of East Hampton is from that line down. Everything else is from that line up, is private property. What is happening with Wamiko is they kinda sprung us a bit of a surprise about two months ago, despite our persistence of asking them, do we need easements? Do we need easements? Do we need easements? Yeah, yeah, we'll get to, you know, yes, you will, at some point, and then they sprung it on us, yeah, we definitely need easements, and it's been really quite a process. So, the Wamiko is going to be having easement agreements with each of the property owners individually, and also with us. And basically, what this easement allows them to do is access their equipment for, if there's ever a storm and they need to access it, if they're gonna upgrade it. We've taken a lot of, they're very conscious in terms of the design of the electric, and the hope of this project is that we're gonna get full build-out in these buildings. And so, the electrical design allows for Wamiko to go in and upgrade the systems if, for whatever reason, Selco decides that they wanna go as a mixed-use building, which they're talking about, and that will change the load on those buildings. If no one-eating gets completely built out and their energy load goes up, then we have the capacity here to do upgrades and change those systems in order to meet the demands in those buildings. So, so, there's been a lot of thought into how the electrical design has been done, and so, they wanna be able to have access to the equipment, and that's essentially what it is. It's pretty standard easement language. We did some tweaking off their boilerplate. I sat on conference calls with the city attorney and the real estate division from Wamiko to negotiate and hash out some of the questions that we had, and some of the language, and I think we've come to a good compromise. So, I'm pretty comfortable with the language as it is, and you see from Jackson email that he's also has endorsed the language as it is, so.
Is Wamiko, Wamiko's good with the language?
Wamiko's good with the language. They signed off on it? Yep, yep. A negotiated process. They're not easy to negotiate.
Just a question, out of curiosity, with all the people on this one, is the infrastructure facilities that Wamiko's doing, they receiving grant money for that? Are they paying out of their own funds?
There's, there's two systems going on. So, yes, they're receiving some grant funds, but they're also putting in $3 million of their own money to do upgrades outside the project area that are necessary in order to feed this project. So, they're doing upgrades on Liberty Street right now, starting on April, starting this week. There's off-site transformer locations that are feeding the system. They're all being upgraded. Those improvements were on their list of things to do, probably 10 years out. Because of this project, they've upped it on the list. And so, they're actually putting in a good amount of their own money above and beyond what they're getting from the grant. So, the grant is paying purely for the work that's being done behind the mills, that's within the project area, stuff that's off-site, they're paying for themselves.
Okay, I wanna state that, because there was always incentives involved in it.
Yeah, the language in the contract, again, you know, there's a lot of grantor and grantee, and, you know, it's a little confusing at first, first read through, as you were saying, but I, you're looking at the maps and looking through the language, and again, because we have a city attorney involved and saying it looks good, I personally don't have any concerns with either of the easements. Any other discussion or questions?
I don't have any. Anyone else from, anyone else from the public? I guess the Google lost.
No, no, it's just like, you know, it goes back and forth, and it's like, well, wait, it's like, who's the grantor, grantee? So.
Very simple, the grantor is the giver.
Correct, wow.
And, and the grantee is the receiver of whatever's being given.
Right, but then, you know, you mentioned who is going to be responsible for what? It's like, okay, let's go back and make sure that that's.
The less grandtor.
Yeah, exactly. At least, at least.
And if we ever do need to do changes or infrastructure improvements, and this is sort of where our sticky point was with Wamiko, is, you know, we do have a second phase of plumbing coming for this project. Now, what we're able to do with that 1.5 million, because it was not what we fully requested, is still being negotiated and hashed out right now with the design team. So, you know, we are gonna be doing some improvements, but really, it's a really simple process working with Wamiko in terms of, this is what we're proposing to do here. They just say, okay, as long as you're not putting a tree that's gonna have roots, that's gonna encase our conduit, you know, we're fine, so.
And, this is for power, in terms of other connections, internet connections?
Verizon is, Verizon's in the loop here. They, yeah, Verizon and Wamiko, most of the requests kind of go.
Hand-in-hand, so, we always had the one, one.
Conduit for city use.
Yeah, conduit for city use is what I was thinking.
Which actually makes sense. Suppose the city goes with its own, in its capacity in the future, provides access to all that built-up, but, you know, that's, that's.
Was it, we certainly should preserve the right to.
Can, is, have we, have we experienced that? Cause normally, when we do an easement with Verizon, we have that language that we insert, but it's a crossbar. We call it a crossbar. Have we encountered that situation with an underground installation? And if we haven't, do we need to? I mean, I understand this is kind of sensitive, I don't, we don't need to necessarily open a Pandora's box, but, you know, maybe, maybe we should think quickly about.
What's the language that's been inserted?
The, the language is that the city reserves the right to, one crossbar, to hold municipal signal.
Signals.
But, there aren't crossbars here, cause that's our whole.
Right, so, they reserve the right to have, city reserve conduit for signals.
Or something, I don't know.
Now, what, to put another line in the ground? I, I mean, I look at it as we're reserving the right, erecting a structure, and we're gonna be able to put something on top.
The way that the pipes are put in the ground is that you dig a trench.
Right.
They put pipes in, they, they put concrete on top of the pipes. What goes in the pipes is fed through.
Fed through.
So, if you wanted to feed through at some point.
Something in the future.
I don't see, it's not like you're adding a cross.
You're not adding a crossbar.
You know what I mean? If you wanted to add another line.
But maybe, reserve the right for a city, a city, a municipal line within the conduit, or something like that.
Let me explore it, and.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't think, it's not a deal killer.
We, we are.
Well, it might be a deal killer for me.
I mean, at least from my perspective, I feel like the project is, you know, if we, if we didn't get that one piece.
I think there are other ways.
There's other ways to figure that out.
But.
But it would be interesting to look into, because if, like, if the city did decide to have its own municipal internet.
It's probably a capability or something like that.
In the future. I don't know.
Can I, can I email Wamiko first tomorrow, and I wanna see, see the city attorney and get a response?
Sure.
And then I can, I can forward that to you.
Well, what I'd like to do, though, is.
Let's pass it.
Forward, we've already set the public hearing, and we can discuss it at the.
At the, at the other public hearing.
Right.
We can get, get the information.
Okay. I'll get the two.
They always kicking the screen.
I know, well, I was supposed to have a guy here, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They always kicking the screen, because they don't want competition.
Right. And I, and I, I mean, I'll tell you, the, the real estate division has been unbelievable to deal with. I mean, talk about inflexible.
Oh, really?
It's been, it's been quite. I'll get up to level.
Jessica was up the telephone call, when there was like, pendulum in here and one little phone.
Yep, yep, yep. She's who I believe.
I remember that.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
For watering and for.
All those are good?
Aye.
So, the public hearing's on the 16th?
The only, you know what, I just gotta say, the only issue I have with this whole thing is that the easements at the top say, "No, all men by these presents."
I saw it.
I feel like, it needs a little updating. If you look around the room, right? Present company included. I think we should, we should, the city should put that out there, that maybe we should update it.
For the next time, but I'd either find already. I'm not running around for signatures again.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
Duly noted. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if they don't need my, my highlighted ones, I'll think back.
Oh, yeah.
No problem.
Thank you.
Battery fast.
Yeah, I'm down to 20% of the sales.
Well, this is a black side.
Is there a timing that we could view the, on some, Jessica, while you're still here?
Oh, yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
So, then, the second item on the agenda, of course, is the request for authorization to dispose of the Carson Street School property. And since our last meeting, the city clerk did send out a posting to other clerks in inquiring, again, whether or not other communities were in a similar situation, whether or not they had an old school building, and what they have done with it. We've probably got at least a dozen responses to that, and I just wanted to say, in Buckland, the school was sold, it's an apartment building, and I found it interesting, because a lot of what was brought up from a community perspective was exactly what other communities had done. So, in one case, it was sold to do a developer, became a department building, or an apartment building. One became, where's this? In Waitley, they became, the school became town offices, the other half being town hall. Now, part of it, it sounds like, is Frontier Regional School District, central offices. Let's see, Memorial Spencer, they sold off three old school buildings. One was held for town meeting, well, I'm sorry, they're just going through their process. They held a town meeting and voted to sell the property, but they sold off three buildings. Stowe, building again was used for municipal offices for about 10 years, then it was sold and renovated into a single-family home. Ipswich, 11, 12 years ago, they converted the old middle school into the town hall. Lovely, very functional. So, again, this is just the mass clerks. This one doesn't say, oh, I'm sorry, Wellesley, demolished. Three housing projects, recreational building, now repurposed as another school. So, there's a number of different proposals or things that have been done, but, again, Wallburn, building's been demolished, one was sold, two vacant schools at this time. And in one of them, I didn't see it here, oh, here it is, redeveloped into Young People's Alliance Club through the efforts of town residents and some department heads. Some of the monies were donated to the town by well-to-do residents. Some monies were raised through grants and other funding, so.
What town was that?
That was Carver. So, that was one of the, one of the requests was for us to consider, you know, Boys and Girls Club, and I did go on the website to find out, well, what does a Boys and Girls Club entail, you know, what would be the requirements, and again, there's a lot of private funding that needs to be put up front.
Well, I know the Boys and Girls, I don't think that they're flush with money at this point.
No, it's all, it comes from the outside. The Boys and Girls Club doesn't come in and say, okay, we're gonna give $100,000 to renovate. You have to have fundraisers and.
Cause I know that they own the property up at the old Mount Tom, which has been sitting vacant for the last 10 years, so.
They like to have a gym.
Yeah, they like, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, I just wanted to say, you know, just in following up, I, you know, I did follow up to see what was entailed with the Boys and Girls Club, and Barbara followed up with some other towns, and like I said, all of the, all the other towns pretty much were doing the same. The only thing that was, I might not have read when I went through there, in one of them, they did use it as a, there was a mixed-use, so there was a business in one of the options, and then there were, you know, apartments up above or something like that. And that was one of the things, again, I think we heard from the community the last time, that they feel that they've lost a lot of businesses in the area.
And they'd like to see a mixed-use.
Right. So, at least for the building. And we are looking at two parcels, and of course, there was a lot of suggestions for the, the back lot, too.
Yep.
Wanna jump in, or have anything, questions or concerns this time?
I'll say this, I'm looking at the data, and one thing that occurs to me is the uniqueness of the property, is the front part being able to business, the back part being residential. I've always envisioned this property as still having some value to the, some municipal value to the community. I have, you know, but I live on the outskirts, I don't live in that direct neighborhood, and I know I have stronger feelings about, oh, that property's gonna be developed, given what is already going on. It becomes the only green space left, so protecting some green space is important. And what that does, though, is that limits your choices for the remaining that's there. One of the thoughts occurred to me, and I don't remember, I remember seeing a cafeteria, but I don't remember if they had an active kitchen basement, if they had like a serving area, but I don't remember having an active kitchen.
I think it does.
They're in the kitchen.
Because there's another group called Meals on Wheels that might be able to, or other groups like that, who may be able to use that area, because it has a whole kitchen.
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that struck me about the property is, like, if we wanted, and you weren't at, I've already said this, but, you know, the building is its own neighborhood business up to the front door. And so, in order to use any sort of neighborhood, you'd have to build out, which I think would wreck the character of the building in a lot of ways, cause I feel like the, the building has character. And, and just like going through it with Jessica, I was blown away by how cool that building is. It's a really, like, going up into the attic, I mean, it's got so much potential, it's a cool, it's a cool place. Really high ceilings, and, you know, so, one of the things I'm gonna put forward tonight is that, you know, we charged the ordinance committee to look at the zoning and, and change, move the zoning so the whole building was neighborhood business, because I feel like that would open up a lot of options for the building, which then would allow us to be a little bit more creative if we wanted to separate the building and the back parcel. You know, if we have a really viable options for the building, that's gonna make it easier to say, well, we have another plan for the back, which might be a municipal use, it might be a garden, it might be a park, it might be green space that the neighbors take care of, or something, you know, whatever. And, and so, I think without that, it would be, it would be a very narrow focus on what the building could be used for. I think it would be like, it's either residential or not, you know, or nonprofit. And do we really need, do we really want that property off the rolls? When we could get it back on the rolls? I mean, I know that there are some things where we would say that the, the use of it would be worth it not being on the rolls, but I feel like opening up those options would make sense to try to get it back on the rolls, so we can look at a little new growth.
And I, I looked at it as a pipeline in the area, and I say that because it identifies, you know, identifies with the community that neighborhood really well, but it's also a gathering place. So, in the event of some natural disaster that none of us here can predict, it becomes a place where people can actually gather and find their loved ones, exchange, you know, for emergency calls or relief deals, whatever. So, you know, that's why I've always adamantly been against building out. There's still, that's one of the values, I think, just that green space has.
The only thing that I was gonna say, I'd be careful with, considering what we're going to do, you know, I'm definitely in favor of, and I think we heard from the community that they would like to have business there, so we should look at the zoning. I'm in agreement with that. But, I would be careful, considering, you know, disposing of the property, selling it, putting too many restrictions on it. Because, again, I, I look at it, and I look at the architecture, and it's beautiful, but I've also seen a lot of buildings that they've done a wonderful job adding a new section on, or doing some further development, renovation to it, and, you know, it could be hypothetically, you could have solar panels running down one whole side, or, you know, taking off a whole side and putting in, like, solarium windows or something. I'm not saying on the building specifically, but I've seen old buildings that they've added new construction to, and completely saved the cultural integrity, if you will, of the structure itself, while still having something that makes it more appealing to, you know, future generations.
Well, and I think, I think from, from my perspective, I think, I'm, I would not wanna necessarily put a whole bunch of restrictions on, on what's done with the building afterwards. My, my whole, I mean, it's other than keeping it, maintaining the character, so, and like, so if there are, you know, major alterations done, then, you know, cause I know the people, there was people at the last one talking about the historical commission, and I feel like there would probably need to be a set, another, another set of eyes on it to, like, help keep it, you know, in fitting. And how we do that is, but, we can get to, but, you know, what I was really thinking was, do, you know, do we want, if we kept the zoning the way it is, do we really want it to buying it and building like a storefront, just coming out front so they can have a business? And then, that was the only alteration, I felt like, that doesn't make any sense.
No.
You know, so, but I'm fine with, if they wanna improve the property, make it better, like, put in an elevator, you know, so people can access, whatever, like, I'm fine with that. So I agree, I don't think there necessarily needs to be a ton of restrictions on what people do with the building, other than not tear it down.
I, I will add this, uh, from my perspective, I was never adverse to actually taking the building down. But it was one of, I've talked to the community, the neighborhood brother, what I heard was how important the building was to them, their stories, and how they actually identify, um, you know, the memories that it brought back. And I've always said this to them, and a lot of people here, they do my travels, what I've seen is that those communities that have taken an interest in preserving and measuring their history seem to do better in bad economic times than those who don't. And that's because of, when they decide, in my mind, when they decide to actually preserve measures of their history, they're more thoughtful, they're more planned out, and they're, and associated, and they're economic, well, and that's a goal. And, uh, so I, I backed away from that, um, initial, I don't really, in a different about taking it down. I mean, they knew it was a lot of, they wanted a strong iteration, trying to keep it in some way, in some form.
That's, I think that's what we heard last time too.
Yeah.
So.
So you'd be, you're thinking of the restriction that you preserve the structure? For me? From your perspective, based on what you just said? I think the building has good bones, uh, the interior is going to naturally need an awful lot of work. I would not doubt that it's let be thrown there too, that has to be.
And probably some asbestos as well.
Yeah, and so, but the facade, uh, the problem is as we delay, the facade decays. And that's my biggest worry is, uh, um, do I wanna see it go through another heating season, I'll see if the air present, but I really don't.
No.
I, I really don't, because it's, it's one of those kinda things, I, it's, I'm real adverse to just letting something hang out there, while we decide what to do, let's decide and move forward.
Well, the community also expressed concerns around further delay, just with having cars going through the back parking lots, or, you know, some people hanging out, if you will, on the premises, and they had concerns with, you know.
My only, uh, my only, uh, sycrileful statement is that I've been told for years how, how we have no place to put the snow, cause every year I get complaints about that they caused the snow back, and if we dispose of the property, we're a joke, and it's snow.
Well, designate a, designate a snow, a snow zone in the back, and we'll be, and it'll be part of like a little playground? It'll be a mountain for the kids to play on, right?
But we had complaints about the quality of the snow in those mountains, and the kids playing on them, so, we'll consider disposing of the snow somewhere else.
The community spoke loud, the community spoke loud there, and I did meet with Jessica, and, uh, so there's some innovation going on there. I need the rest of this, some discussion of the property. I, uh, at the last meeting, Justin, we talked about the possibility of, of, of looking at, uh, well, using, using the back portion, certainly, I think there was almost consensus about the back portion of the property being used for some public purpose, a community garden, park.
Some type of green space.
Green space, where folks could still gather, uh, and that certainly made sense, uh, as opposed to plowing the street and putting up.
Crowds.
Yeah, more, more duplexes, or whatever. In terms of using the, having a use for the, a public use for the property, uh, I had approached Linda Talbot and, uh, East Hampton Community Center, and both are interested, at least looking and exploring to see if their needs may coincide. It may very well not work, uh, maybe, uh, we'd like to, I'd like to get them in there as soon as possible.
Well, that was one of the other things at the last meeting, we were hoping, since City Planner's here.
Yeah.
I'm thinking maybe we might be able to set a date when we.
I didn't bring my calendar, but yes, we can, we can figure that out. I also spoke with a private developer today, um, to ask whether he'd be willing to go in with me and just to, he's a contractor, does a lot of construction, has done a lot of building projects, not just in Massachusetts, but in other states, just to see if he could give me his eye on what kind of work we need to go into that building. Whether, you know, from his brief assessment, there's lead issues, there's asbestos issues, you know, and it puts some dollar figures behind what he thinks it's gonna cost of somebody to bring it up to where, where it needs to be in order to meet building code.
Right.
Only four blocks of square.
Cause that's, that's gonna factor into when we eventually recommend, you know, as far as pricing.
Exactly, and that's why I wanted his eyeball on, you know, what would he be willing to pay for a building like this? Knowing how much investment that he would have to put in, in order to bring it back to code, or to meet building code. I mean, you've got two floors, you have, an elevator is gonna have to be part of it at some point, and that's gonna be expensive. And that's gonna deter a lot of people, the idea of having to support an elevator, so.
And that's, was one of my concerns I brought up at the last meeting too, just with the, uh, working in Northampton and looking at the former Florence Learning Center as a, an old school, but they were considering it for district offices at some point, and then asking eventually for my recommendation of whether or not this, the, uh, school should dispose of it or return it back over to the city, and just looking at what needed to go into it in addition to all the other concerns, just to bring it up to code. I think the city was in the same position where they were renting it out for a while, but how long are we gonna hold on to this before we have to do all these major investments to bring it up to code? And, uh, whether it's the handicap accessibility, or the furnace, replacing the furnace, the roof, and I think they finally said it's just not, we're not at that break even point anymore, we really need to, to move on.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no accessible entrance to that building, right?
No.
Because the front steps are steps, and then the side entrances, steps down and steps up, so it's not accessible. So that, I mean, that precludes a lot of, like, um, in order to bring it up, and if, if you're gonna do a senior center, you'd have to bring it ADA, and that's, woo hoo! That's just a cost.
Well, when you're pricing it up, you know, running gamut, I look at it this way, I look at it as you're pricing the shell, because if you want a work that would have to be done, price it as assessed, it's not a real listing, but that's my own personal opinion, it's not necessarily a real listing.
But I'm not so worried about the pr, the pricing right now, as the decision to actually dispose of it.
And the restrictions that we put on it.
Exactly.
Right.
But I, I think that's great, that, um, City Planner is already looking into that.
My understanding in the past, restrictions is kind of a bad word, we use them for guidelines.
Guidelines.
Cause we do, what we design is, we have full control of the minimum sale price, but after that, we're providing, so to say, the, what I call preferred things, the RFP, so it helps weigh the RFP based on how many of those guidelines are met. But it doesn't mean all of them, or any of them have to be met, that's one of the things that we need to be clear about. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin.
Okay, any other input?
Hi, I'm Jackie Chris Obrera, I'm a member of the East Hampton Housing Partnership, and, um, I, I know, I was at a couple of meetings where the community spoke about what they really wanted for that building, um, the neighbors in particular. But I do think that if there's any way of, if you're thinking about doing it for mixed use and having there be housing, considering at least seeing if some of the units can be affordable, if not all, I understand that there's a density of affordable housing in that neighborhood already, we get that, but I think, you know, there's gonna be multiple units, a percentage of them, I mean, could be affordable, that's something there. That's something I just said to Jessica.
In the existing?
In the existing building, if you decided to do it as a mixed use or wanted to put it out there for housing, to have, have at least a portion of it.
So that would be something again, to consider when you have the developer going through, or just to kinda eyeball and say, how many units would you anticipate? You know, if it was only two, that might be a little difficult.
That's partly why I wanna ask him, you know, just looking at the spacing, understanding square footage, what you really need, um, what makes, what's sellable, what's marketable.
Like this, right, I mean, a lot of those older buildings, if there's really nice woodwork in there, or, again, you've got the high ceilings, it's like you're not gonna cram a bunch of apartments in there versus making two larger condos.
So if you're already excited that you're not gonna allow development behind it, because you can put a lot more, if you allow some expansion off the back into some of that space.
We, we haven't.
No decisions been made at this time, I mean, we didn't hear too many favorable, favorable members of the community saying, like, we want more housing in this area, but.
Or more, yeah, I mean, but the thing is, is there is space in the back, I mean, even if there was some build out in the back, there would be plenty of space for open space.
You have to put that for an elevator, that's why I was.
Yeah, I think the, the build out would have to be.
But again, that comes into when I was saying about the integrity of the building, it's like, you can certainly put some build out and still maintain the cultural heritage of the, the front.
I had some interesting conversations with some neighbors that are not active anti-housing people, that live next, like directly next to the Parsons School, and they were really gung ho to see a mixed use thing going there. They had no issues with affordable housing, um, and, and so there, this was, uh, two different sets of neighbors, one, like adjacent across the street, and one next door. And, um, and they thought it would be, just, just the reuse of the property would be beneficial, and to, to expedite the process, is what they were like, saying, let's, let's get some people in here. And keep letting, have it not be vacant anymore, which is what, you know, so.
So I think we have a couple interests, again, you know, we need to, just kind of in summation, we need to look at rezoning the property.
Yes.
So we'll.
I can do, if you want, I can do all that right now.
Sure.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt just for once a minute? Cause I had two other things that I wanted to say and make us, um, lost in the shuffle. One is, if you wanna see a really excellent example of a historic building that's been preserved extremely well, um, go up to UMass and go to Skinner Hall, right, Justin? Where they basically took the old building and they encapsulated it and added onto it, and it's really, really, really well done, so. There are great examples of buildings like that.
Jackie, can you give me one, one favorite?
Yep.
Spell your last name for me?
I can, cause no one else can. B R O U S S E A U. And then the second half is P E R E I R A.
Okay, thank you.
So the other thing I was gonna say, when Jessica mentioned that there's a fully functioning kitchen in the basement, I know Turner's Falls has a commercial kitchen that they use in a small business incubator, I think Franklin Regional Development, I can't remember the name of the nonprofit, but they manage it, but that kind of idea of like a small business incubator, where people could use that commercial kitchen and maybe other space for a mixed use.
This is in Turner's?
Yeah, Turner's Falls.
What's the name of it?
I'll find out, I'm, I just can't remember it off the top of my head. And it's, it's interesting in terms of the idea, I'm thinking of a specific business, small, of a bakery, that really, she literally, she changed the zoning so that residential kitchens could be allowed as a home business occupation. And that, she outgrew that fast, she then started working with me, and was able to use, um, the ovens up there to bake her bread, and now she's moved into a storefront location. That's how economic development is supposed to work, you're supposed to be able to go small and then move to bigger locations, and a community needs to have those locations to occupy. So I think that could be a, a really, I think that type of function could work really well here in terms of economic development in the city. That's the type of small business activity that we're seeing right now, and to have a space that can buy incubator space so that people can get into a storefront, cause we still have plenty that are open. You know, maybe they just need a small space that's not out of their house, because to get at home occupation, you have to go through a special permit through the CBA, quite frankly, it's completely, yeah.
Well, and if it's, if it's mixed use.
It's three hundred dollars that somebody has to drop in order to be able to work out of their house.
Right, and if it's mixed use, I mean, I know that, at this point, I've talked to two business owners right here that are interested in moving to that space, because they've outgrown their space on Cottage Street. And, I mean, that's, that's the next step of moving from your house, moving to your storefront, now moving to your storefront, to moving to.
Right.
This bigger space.
Bigger location.
Which might suit their needs better, and so I think that's why the, you know, the having that mixed use opportunity could be, you know, good for, if, if it's not those businesses, it could be another business that is looking to expand and, and, um.
So the core area to that is, uh, available grant funding, community development block things?
Um, we'd have to look into that, I'm not gonna.
Yep, understand that.
Yeah, you know, it's a tricky program to navigate.
Are we gonna zone?
Any funds?
Um, that neighborhood is one of the lowest income block group areas, um, in the city. But however, I will, uh, note that we are now working, we're still working off data from, um, the two thousand census, and one HUD releases two thousand and ten census data, um, the, the percentages may be changing in the city, and we don't know what's gonna happen. You know, there's trends showing that East Hampton is getting wealthier, um, and so I don't know where those flip flops are gonna be happening, and so it could be possible that that neighborhood may no longer qualify, I don't know, you know what I mean? I'm ju, I'm still saying, I'm just saying that I, I don't wanna.
How close was the neighborhood back in the two thousand census?
Um, that neighborhood?
To being wealthy.
It's just ab, I mean.
Was just above.
It's like fifty-four percent, I mean, there's, you know, there's, most of the neighborhoods are mid-fifties, mid-forties. So, I think it'll still qualify, I'm just saying, I'm just saying there's a lot of whatevs with CDG money. There's a lot of things that you have to qualify for, there's a lot of hoops that you have to jump through, and so I would wanna sit down with my CDG coordinator and, and strategize on whether that would make sense. Right now, right now, we're committed to doing an infrastructure project in this, under this grant. That, if we are funded for that design monies, we therefore have to apply to get that project built over the next couple of years. And we are on the edge in terms of getting funded year to year, you know, we're sort of right there. So if we don't get funded this year for design, you know, maybe we could consider Parsons as part of that, but as, as the next year's programming, um, but we have, if we do get funded for infrastructure design this year, we're gonna have to endure with building that, or we, we might have to pay the money back.
But what I was looking at is trying to provide incentives for developers, and it's also the capacity to make that tax incentive property, or provide some, because it's all, so that, all that takes time to put in place though.
Well, that's, that's my concern though, too, is just with a process like this is the time. And again, the community's asking for us to kind of make a decision and move on it, and get people in there, and not let the infrastructure decay any further. And, uh, at, at the expense of, you know, creating an artificial timeline, what I was gonna say earlier is, while we're all here, what I'd like to do tonight is maybe set up a, a site visit where we can go and see the property, and then set the next, or attempt to set the next meeting tonight, looking at dates that work for us to reconvene for property, just so we can maybe, like I say, create that artificial timeline of next time we meet, try to make a decision on if zoning has had the opportunity to consider what they're going to do, but, I've always hesitated to say, but I would like to make a decision maybe by the next meeting, if it's a month out, so that, you know, if the mayor's gonna put a, an RFP together, have time to do that and get it on the, the market, if that's the decision, by the summer, so that we could potentially avoid that heating season next season.
You're trying to avoid the next season.
Right, you know, that's kind of in the back of my head.
Now, you're talking about, you know, changing the zoning, uh, building, what is, what are you, what have you been thinking about for the rest of the property? Like, if you're talking open space, would that be the city maintaining, you know, the city owning and maintaining the property?
I think that would probably be one of the things that we would, you know, put in our recommendations, would be a partnership probably, you know, between the landowner and maybe Parks and Rec, a shared, or maybe even put it on the landowner, if, if we don't have the resources to maintain another property, or, I mean, you know, and honestly, maybe it would be something that would be suited, the neighbors have come out and said, you know, we want ownership, we want, we want this, you know, put it on the neighbors. Say, this is, this is your space, this, you know, create a little committee and, and take care of this. You know, I think that could be something that, um.
Maybe we'd have to look at the community garden idea, again, there, you have more of the community maintaining the property versus.
Are there, are there any models of?
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of, of Citizen Designs, Park, um.
Citizen Designs, Citizen Maintains, Citizen.
There's a lot of, well, there's more, it's more of like a guerrilla way of doing things, it's not necessarily sanctioned, but, um, there are examples of, um, out in, I think it's in Portland, um, there's an organization that basically takes over intersections in small residential neighborhoods, and they've transformed those intersections into gathering places, and they've painted the centers, they've put up kiosks, they have little mini libraries, they, you know, they have a little tea station, they have, you know, and they're, they're watched by the neighbors, they're maintained by the neighbors, they, once a year, they have like a cleanup party where they repaint the mural and they, you know, do what they need to do. But it's because a lot of those, those neighbors don't have yards, and so that is their, that is their gathering space, that is where they gather around the community. Yes, there are examples, you know, there is a way to do it, we would need to make sure that there is, there's a lot of renters there. And I think that we would need to make sure that some of the people who own homes in that neighborhood, people who are established in that neighborhood are willing to take a lead role, not people who are just renting and then are gonna be applying receipts.
Who maintains our community garden?
It's, now, this is where I think we're, it might get a little tricky, we have a garden committee that is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So, the Conservation Commission, maybe somebody to approach in terms of some form of ownership, but they're not, they're not parks, most of our, their properties are more natural areas. So it would be worth having a conversation with them, I think, um, to see whether this is something that they would be interested in entertaining, I'm not sure if they would or not. I've already spoke with the community garden committee, some of the members, they would be thrilled to have community gardens in the, in the city center. I think that that's where community gardens need to be held, where people who don't have a car, still wanna have access to fresh food, can walk to a, to a garden and be able to grow their own food. There's been conversations with the community center that they would be willing to help teach people how to grow and eat and prepare fresh foods that they may not know how to prepare, so they may grow some heat, but then they don't know what to go do with it.
That could be a great model.
So there, I think there's a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about partnering, partners of, um, throughout the community, of how to work in that garden and make it more of a, a food security, um, urban agriculture kind of project, rather than just having, you know, gardens out on Park Hill, which are wonderful and fabulous, and there are a lot of people who use those, but for those that have a food security issue, who may not have a car to get to Park Hill, I think it's important that we provide a location for people to be able to grow their own food, especially in, in a neighborhood like that, which has a pretty low, um, population, low money income individuals.
And so for me, hearing that, that gives me a lot of hope, I mean, I guess, hope is not something you necessarily rest an ordinance on, but, but that's okay, I mean, I feel like, you know, knowing that the location is right, and knowing that there's committed partners that might be interested, and that is just the top of the iceberg, I mean, if you think about partnering with schools, if you think about, you know, um, there's a lot of different people you can engage to bring a community garden to that space. I feel like that, I mean, like stressing about who's gonna maintain that is probably secondary, I mean, that's just my thought.
The only thing for consideration again, though, I do believe it was brought up by some community members, that they don't have an actual neighborhood park for children in that area. So the, the play areas in the, in the area are lacking, and it might be better to, and again, I'm just throwing it out there as just a reminder.
Absolutely, yeah, there's, I mean, there's at least, I measured, there's at least an acre back there.
Yeah, oh, it's huge. Yeah, oh, it's huge.
You don't need an acre of community gardens. That would be crazy. So take like a quarter acre. Take a quarter acre, put as community gardens, you know, create gathering spaces, create play structures, create places for people to get, to get out, to meet their neighbors. Like I said, the Open Space Recreation Plan that is recently completed identifies this neighborhood as being one of two neighborhoods in the city that does not have parks or open spaces within a walking distance. It's not within a half mile of most of the people who live there. People who live there, they have to walk Pleasant Green. They have to walk to the bike trail. Those are really too far away, and there really is a lack of open space in that neighborhood. There's a need for it. The question is the maintenance side. And that's, that's gonna be the tricky part to this, is how do we do this without burdening the city anymore when we're strapped as we are in terms of maintenance? Parks and Rec actually owns a playground in front of the building.
But it's dilapidated.
That's dilapidated. So they're not taking care of that piece. You know, are we really gonna expect them to take care of something in the back? And I don't think they're gonna wanna take care of it. I think the Conservation Commission would be willing to potentially do some, if there's things in there, like if we can do some demonstration gardens that are showcasing, I don't even know, stormwater management, rain gardens, that kind of thing. I mean, I think there's a lot of possibilities.
But even if, you know, if we got the right partner in the space, that could be one of the RFP recommendations, is that they would take some ownership in maintaining, you know, some piece of the back parcel for open community space. They'd get extra points, a cheaper price, right? Like, I feel like that's one of the recommendations that would make sense. Is trying to make the people that are in there have some responsibility to help maintain the back, you know, some of the back parcel, like if, not the community gardens, but the, maybe a couple play structures or, you know.
I can see that it just begins to get a little complicated then when you start.
How much would it cost to maintain publicly the space?
Well, it depends on what it's.
What is it, what is it, let's say.
It depends on how it's designed.
Start, start, start to dream. We have an opportunity here to take what still can be a real jewel of a portion of the city that has a need. Let's say we do it medium grade to upper grade. How much would that cost? I don't know.
Like, what, like when you get all those people coming in and building play structures? Like the community play structure thing?
You get some play structures, you study, there's some.
That's the problem. The problem is that someone's gonna go over there and mow the grass and.
Well, let's say we don't, we don't need all the grass. No grass. We'll put chips down. We don't have, we don't have grass.
Empty the trash.
Now we don't have to take care of.
Make sure there's no graffiti. I mean, the graffiti thing.
So graffiti and trash.
Graffiti is becoming an issue in the city. I don't know who's been down to Lower Mill Pond Parks lately. I think they might have cleaned it up, but the bathroom for trash.
Yes, the brand, the brand new job.
So, you know, graffiti is becoming an issue that poor John Mason is dealing with the best that he can with the capacity that he has.
He needs a team of teenagers. To be his anti-graffiti squad.
Didn't the governor put out a grant program for urban, preserving urban parks or evolving urban parks?
Yes. So he applied for funds to upgrade the playground at Onondot Park and the State Park.
So just to really, going back to that particular parcel for one second, you guys have a really great opportunity for this to be at least a triple, because it's all CPA concerns here, right? So if the right developer's in there, they could potentially apply for CPA funding for affordable housing, open space, and historic preservation. So that might be something that you get into the RFP somehow to say to, you know, to make it clear, "We can't promise you this money, but this is an opportunity." If you wrap all of these things in this parcel, there's an opportunity for you to get some funding to support whatever it is that you're doing.
I think the CPA is a great idea. I was, what I was driving at was part of the sale price. If we took the funds back, put it into capital, moved it, moved the funds around, could we get it somewhere where it could be slotted to reserve for?
The funds would go into sale of real estate.
I know, has to go in, but eventually the, some of the funds can be moved out.
With the sale of real estate, and then with the sale of real estate funds, you could use it for anything that you would bond.
You could buy them a lot more, but, so they put, pay for the operating cost of it. We could use those funds to bond some, in a budget strategy to offset what we would bond.
You could use it to buy, like something capital that would have normally been a bond in.
Right.
That's what sale, but that's where the money goes into a sale of real estate fund.
But by having the money in that sale of real estate fund, that would relieve the requirement to bond some other monies if we had a project that we need to combine.
I think, I think the problem is, what we're trying to bring out is exactly what Jessica said. You know, the graffiti and the maintenance. Like right now, we're having a, trying to get some. The bike path is, I mean, it's a major concern right now. We're gonna maintain that, you know.
You need a friendly developer offering for a dollar's worth of CPA funds back to the city once they buy it.
So, you know, if you're, I think your concerns are very legit. Watching out to, you know, burden, burden the community, you wanna have things that are pleasurable, but there are definitely concerns too.
We have, we have two things here. First is there's a sense of urgency trying to make sure the building is settled before this next winter comes. That's where the focus is. The second part is there's a parcel of open space out there, and there's some ideas coalescing. How to make them happen is what we're struggling with. So the challenge to the city planner is, is there an expert? Or is there, I was gonna say the planning, is there who can get hired to help us figure out?
I actually know of somebody who, somebody I went to grad school with, who, she did a lot of this intersection repair work in Portland. She's got a design, like a one-person design firm here. I think she would be great to lead a community-driven design project. And she's into permaculture. She's into a lot of sustainable practices in terms of open space and parks. And so I may have, I would be interested in approaching her in terms of what would it cost her to do something like this. There are certainly other design firms out there that we could ask as well to see if they'd be willing to run a, you know, community-driven charrette. There's also UMass students. I mean, there's always, there's always UMass students. They do come with a price. I mean, they're not free. They do look for some level of donation to go back.
The price, I bet you already know.
Well, you know, it depends on the project and the professor, but it can run somewhere between seven and fifteen thousand dollars for the students.
What I was looking at is, can we utilize CPA funds to actually pay for the rare design? I don't know that.
I don't think it all applies, but I need to work in.
No, I just had, I just had a thought. I mean, it almost seems like we're to the point where we have a relative consensus about the building. And right now, the question mark is what do we do with the back? Well, why don't we just look at, you know, saying, "Hey, let's focus on the building now. That's what's gonna cost the money." And then, you know what? We can keep working and work diligently to make sure that we do what's right for the back, but they don't necessarily have to be on the same timeline.
And they don't have to be on the same parcel, but the problem is we have to build something in. If we're gonna partner with somebody, we have to.
That's a thing.
Have to partner with.
Because I mean, I was thinking.
Or how much of the proceeds we wanna take and kind of set aside in the bonding account to know that will offset some enough money that we could have something.
Because I feel like, you know, if we had the right person in there, if we had the right tenant, not tenant, but if we had the right person that owned it, like for them to go out and say, "You know what? If someone graffiti's back here, first of all, we're gonna, we'll put like floodlights back here. So if someone comes back, like, that's number one, you know, in the times when they would be doing graffiti. But, you know, if somebody puts graffiti back here, we'll clean it up because this is our space. We don't want graffiti back here." Or if the lawn's growing up, you know, we'll mow it.
If you sell it, you never know if somebody's gonna flip it.
If they're gonna, well.
That's the thing. I mean, you have to think about, they're trying to make money. So they're gonna come in here, they're gonna renovate a building, unless it's a long-term lease agreement with the city, but we don't wanna own the building.
Right.
I mean, we don't want it to be like a town hall or, you know, something like that where we own it and somebody else is maintaining it. You know, they could very well flip it. They could come in there and renovate it and then sell it. So I think you need to think a little bit more long-term. I see where you're going with it, but, but I'd be conscious of that.
Yeah.
And I'm just worried again about having too many restrictions or, you know, we're looking for this special person who's willing to do X, Y, and Z. And I was concerned, it almost sounded at one point that you were talking about having it as all one parcel where we're basically selling it off as one parcel, both, both pieces. I don't know. If somebody said, I'm pretty sure you had said something. I was thinking about it that way. And I'm kind of in favor of what Salem was just saying. Why don't we just, at this juncture, focus on the building itself? Make a determination on that, and then we can figure out the back part.
But it's one-person parcel, then, correct?
There's two parcels, actually.
There's two parcels. It's not divided in the way that I think we want it divided. We hire a surveyor, they drop a line, they write a D, we're all set.
Yeah.
You change the marketability when you separate it. So if you, if any of your options include a mixed-use, which allows building off the back, and then you cut off the back, then you've limited.
Well, I think you draw the line far enough back.
You draw it back, so the setback would be allow for the addition of an elevator or maybe a small.
And then you, you also are then gonna create a parcel on the back, which you're gonna have to maintain the egress to somehow, because doesn't one cut through the other?
It's the second parcel.
That's the second parcel of your back.
Yeah.
So, but then somebody's gonna have to make, you know, then we all get another parcel that until you decide what to do with it is an overgrown.
But that's no different than it is right now. We're in the same, we're in the same boat that we're in right now.
So you're thinking of splitting the parcels, not doing this all as one thing?
Well, I mean, I think if, if we're, right now, it seems like the only thing that we have, and it almost seems like the back parcel might take a little bit more finesse. You know, a little bit more partnering, a little bit more, and that's almost like the, that's almost like a, I don't wanna say gift, but it's adding an asset to the community. It's adding an asset to that neighborhood that is needed and it's been identified as a need. So I, I have no problem with splitting and saying, "This is what we're gonna do with this," which is not exactly, we're not exactly sure what, but it's gonna be a public use. It's gonna be some sort of a partnership. But we know the building. If we don't move on that, it's gonna end up costing us more money, you know. Kids, if there's kids out there graffitiing around, there's kids gonna be throwing rocks at the windows. There's, you know, it's gonna get worse the longer this takes.
It's a big.
Yeah, it's been, and it's been out, and.
There's graffiti already on the playground.
On the playground, yeah.
For a while.
So, I mean, I don't know. I just, I don't, I think if we're not exactly sure what the back parcel's gonna be, maybe we go with where the consensus is, which is the building, which is, let's try to rezone it. Let's come up with some common sense guidelines.
Look at dropping another line.
Look at dropping another line for, to split the parcel.
Right.
And go from there.
Neighborhood business offers what uses and what restrictions? First floor?
I have my little cheat sheet, actually, which you may have in your files. I think it was from last year, but it's, it's a lot of businesses, neighborhood business, low-impact business, farmers, neighborhood.
Requires a commercial use on the first floor?
Oh, for mixed use?
Yes.
You said neighborhood business.
Well, let's go through the various.
Downtown business requires a mixed-use building that the first floor is commercial.
In neighborhood business?
I don't think that's the case in neighborhood business. I think that's just for downtown business, but I'd have.
So it could be residential on the first floor?
Yes. You can make, you can make.
Or, or commercial on the second floor.
You can tell it's converted.
I'm just, I'm just, I'd like to understand the options here. If we call it neighborhood business, we can use the first floor, second floor, commercial, mixed use, both, both upper levels, lower levels? Okay, if we call it another, mixed, you said another term.
Well, I mean, the zoning, the zoning.
Downtown.
I'm not sure, I don't know. So we can't, we can't change the downtown business?
No, not at all.
Because the existing zoning is, is neighborhood business within. And so if we, if we put that parcel downtown, it'd be spot-zoned. So basically what we're doing is we're just bringing the building into compliance with the zoning that it's in. It just happens to be that the line is drawn, so our fifteen, you know, is right behind it. But if you were ten feet forward, you'd be in neighborhood business.
The way that that zone is basically drafted, that for all of those parcels on the street, eighty feet back on both sides, it's neighborhood business. That's just how it is on this.
And then the rest is residential?
And then behind those are just, but, yeah.
Right.
So I'm gonna throw another question in the mix. There is a side property there where that is privately owned, that's a lawn, a little piece of land. That adds value for that owner to sell as a separate parcel.
I feel like they've been approached.
Have they?
Because somebody at the last meeting, I think it was maybe some of the neighbors had approached? Because they said, "Oh, they're not interested." It was at our last meeting. Someone, someone stated that they had talked to that landowner and they were not interested in selling their property.
I don't know if this is gonna be for first.
Okay. Before, I have to leave in a couple minutes, like in one minute? So can I move that we suggested the ordinance update that they move forward in rezoning the building into neighborhood business?
To look into that as a possibility?
Yep.
I don't have a problem with that. Look at, examine.
Yep.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of it or not in favor.
We'll figure that out.
Take that as a second?
Yeah, I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, let me, I'm gonna give this over to you as soon as I tap this in.
Absolutely. And can we take a look at our calendars? Or do you have a rough idea?
Um, evening time was better, I think, right? Wasn't that like the four o'clock slot was the time that you guys were available? Am I thinking right? Is that correct?
I have to take a look at a four o'clock.
Is it like four o'clock was the time that you?
Four o'clock's good for me.
Okay.
As long as it's not on Tuesday or Thursday, which is tough for me tonight because I still eat right now.
Do you wanna say, like, can we say four fifteen on, I don't, Wednesday? I think I'm available next Wednesday, but I email you.
Just coming with?
I just have to take a look at my, my schedule.
Or we can do it by email, and I can just shoot out a couple Wednesdays at four fifteen that are available.
We have to post it? We both go?
That's a good question.
Oh, right. So maybe we should push it back by a week so that you can get your posting required.
I don't know. I think we can meet the posting requirement.
I can't until I actually see what the schedule is. I know frequently I have meetings up until four o'clock in the afternoon, so.
You can either delay or let it burn.
Generally can't be here. Five o'clock is the earliest.
That's for you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
I'll email that out then. Can I give you a motion to adjourn?
Oh, we're adjourning? You don't have to adjourn.
You're leaving. We're just scheduling the next meeting, so the meeting's done. We're done with the minutes.
Right, well, whatever you know for a meeting, just let me know, and I will second and aye. Thanks, guys.